All I had to do was stand here and it got quiet. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, candidates, and welcome to the 2023 Candidates Forum hosted by the Deltaville Community Association. The DCA operates with funds raised through charitable organizations, grants for specific projects, and events we organize in the community. We manage and maintain this building, the community pool, tennis and pickleball courts, basketball courts, and the children's playground all within this roughly three-acre campus. We also maintain and operate our iconic Deltaville Ballpark as well as the building used by the Rapatic Railroad's Club, which also serves as a meeting place for the local Coast Guard Auxiliary. All of their facilities are available for use by the public and are used by multiple organizations. We meet the third Thursday of every month at 7:00 PM, and all are welcome to attend. That is the infomercial that I was given to give. Alright, there you go. And again, we rent all the facilities, and so if your organization would like to do something with that, we're happy to have you. Alright, the questions for our candidates tonight came from the public, and they were solicited for about a month on social media and newsprint. They came in to a single board member who removed the name of the author and organized them by topic. Last week, a small committee reviewed the questions, removed those that were deemed inappropriate, and those that could not be answered by all candidates. Questions that were duplicated were put together into a single or multi-part question that we felt reflected the opinions and the intent of the author. Please know that no question reflects an opinion, position, or persuasion of the Deltaville Community Association or its members. These all came from the public, and it was cut off last, well, the end of last week. Alright, now, I would like to say that many public servants were on the ballot this year, but due to time constraints, only those running for contested offices were invited to participate. I'm sure they all would like to go say something, but only the ones that were running against someone else were here. I would also like to say that we are live streaming this on the internet, and that the recorded event can be accessed from a link found on www.deltavillevirginia.com. And just as a side note, we had over fifty people watching Tuesday night from home, which is pretty good with the attendance we had. The procedure tonight is as follows. Each candidate will begin by introducing themselves for a maximum of three minutes. After introductions, the first question will be asked to the candidate who secured that opportunity by luck of the draw. They will have up to three minutes to respond. The mic will then be passed down the line for each candidate to answer. Mr. Jerry Crittinen, here in the front row, will be the timekeeper. After the last question, each candidate will have the opportunity for a three-minute closing statement. And without further delay, I'll give you our moderator, Ms. Beth Hurd.
Thank you. Can all of you hear us okay up there? Okay. We are going to begin with opening statements from all of the candidates, and I believe Mr. Evans drew the card. If you could proceed with your opening.
How about now? Alright. My name is James Evans. I'm running for the Board of Supervisors Jamaica District. I own a farm in Jamaica. We grow Christmas trees, berries, fruit. And of late, we've done a real good job at killing Christmas trees, but we're getting better. I'm a veteran of the U.S. Air Force, grew up in this area. My father lives here. My son and his family live here, and we are embarking on a generational farm in Jamaica. So, very excited to be running for the Board of Supervisors. I have a little bit different perspective, as you'll see as we go through the debate tonight. But love Middlesex County and look forward to serving.
Yes, my name is Wayne Jesse. Been born and raised here in Middlesex County. Graduated from Middlesex High School, and then I went on to further my education to Concord College in Athens, West Virginia, where I received a Bachelor of Science degree in management concentration and business. Then after that, I returned home to work with my father's business, Frank Jesse Construction, and I joined the fire department. And then I married my wife Vivian Reed Jesse for thirty-eight years. I've been a firefighter for thirty-nine years. Also, I was elected on the first school board in nineteen ninety-six, the first elected school board. And then passing on my father in two thousand and one, I was appointed. And after being appointed, I've been on the board for twenty-two years. And I love Middlesex County, and all I'd like to say, I've been on a lot of boards since I've been here. And if you look at me, you know, all I have to say that I don't run on any party. My party is Middlesex County and what's best for the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Randy Crittinen, and I'm running for the Board of Supervisors from this district. My roots in Deltaville run deep. While I grew up and attended school and completed my police career in Montgomery County, Maryland, I spent my summers and school breaks here. Both sets of grandparents were from here. My parents graduated from Seringa High School. And when I was a kid, I came down here for all my summer breaks and Christmases and everything else, every chance I got. I had a lot of great experiences here as a young person, and when I retired in nineteen ninety-seven, I couldn't wait to come back down here to what I consider to be my hometown. I have a considerable amount of experience, I think, in public safety. As I said, I'm retired from the police department as a commander. I was a life member and past president of the Middlesex County Volunteer Rescue Squad down here, the Deltaville Rescue Squad. And I was a volunteer firefighter for sixteen years, and now I'm still currently in EMT. So, I'm running for this because I just realized what a great place Deltaville is. It's a wonderful, wonderful place to be to raise your family. You know, I mean, who could complain about Deltaville? The fishing, the hunting, I mean, the boating, the Deltas Game Center at Eric Conic Park, the Maritime Museum. We have a wonderful golf course, and I think that we even have a world-class croquet field now. So, I mean, you can't complain about Deltaville. So, we do have some problems, and I'm looking forward to having the opportunity to work on those problems.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. I'm Joe Hyman, running for supervisor here in Pine Top District. I live on Stingray Point. I'm married to Rosabeth Ward. Between us, we have a wonderful growing family of four daughters, one son, a beautiful granddaughter, and two more grandbabies on the way. I moved to Middlesex thirty-five years ago to start a construction business, the Allen Group, and raise a family. Growing up, I made frequent trips to visit my great-grandparents, staying in the cottage they had built across from their home. That cottage is now my home. My attraction to Middlesex was firstly the water and sailing, and as I got older, the rural lifestyle and the opportunities I saw to build a business from scratch was what attracted me. I'd like to tell you why I'm running for supervisor. I'm running for supervisor because I can make a difference. I have a broad base of experience that I can put to use right away. I'm a small businessman, having built a successful construction business from the ground up right here in Middlesex. I understand what it takes to operate a small business in Middlesex and the surrounding counties. I've built and operated two hotels in Gloucester, owned a two-hundred-slip marina for over twelve years, and owned and operated commercial rental properties right here in Middlesex. I'm community-oriented. I'm a founding member of the Middlesex Rotary Club, the YMCA, and Restore Urbana Creek. I have served on numerous boards and continue serving on the Arts in the Middle, Middlesex Sports Complex, the Economic Development Authority, and Gloucester Revolving Loan Fund. I work with my daughter Susan, who is race director for the Deltaville 5K, which had its most profitable year ever, returning over twenty thousand dollars to the DCA this past year. I've been working the polls, starting in twenty twenty, when COVID hit, and they needed help because some of our older poll workers were understandably afraid. I support our kids. I spent years coaching baseball, softball, soccer, and youth football in Gloucester. I served on the Little League Board and umpired until just a few years ago. As a former chairman and current board member of our YMCA, I have the opportunity to advocate for our youth and families every day. I have legislative experience. I served as the legislative representative for the Home Builders Association when the Chesapeake Bay Act was being implemented. I served three terms on the Urbana Town Council and have served on several advisory boards with Middle Peninsula Planning District Commission. I know how the Board of Supervisors works and can hit the ground running. I am fiscally conservative and understand the short-term and long-term effects government spending and taxation has on all of us, and how it can act like an anchor weighing down growth and innovation. I support the Board of Supervisors voting to return a portion of the personal property tax, although I would have voted to return more. The money received was far above the budget amount and belongs to the taxpayers. I look forward to sharing more of my vision for the county and answering tonight's questions. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. The first question, yes. Are we good, Stephen? Alright. First question, I believe, goes to Mr. Evans. Question is as follows, and I am not planning to repeat the questions between different candidates' answers, but I certainly can. Some of these questions are lengthy, and you may want them repeated, so please just ask me to repeat them if you'd like them repeated. Question number one. County water has arrived in Deltaville, and public sewer has potential to be in Deltaville within the next three to four years. Within tax map number forty-one, which encompasses Stingray Point and Broad Creek, there are over nine hundred platted lots within grandfathered subdivisions that are mostly less than a quarter of an acre in size. The arrival of public water and sewer would make those sites buildable under current zoning regulation. Access to many of those properties are by way of streets that are not yet built and not regulated by current ordinance. If elected, what, if anything, would you advocate to lessen density, assure proper access, and also ensure the safe accessibility of emergency services to those building lots?
Wow. We're gonna hit the ground running.
Do you want me to repeat the last question?
No, ma'am. I think primarily, the key concern, as you stated in the question, is having access for emergency services and thinking through the development, rather than being reactive to a development or to a proposal for development. So I think one of the key things that we need to do through ordinances and through zoning is make sure that we are thinking about the future of Deltaville, what we envision the area looking like, and what types of growth we want to see. In the absence of a plan, you get chaos. And so I think it's vital that we think through these issues ahead of time. We look at the planning ahead of time, and we look at developing ordinances that are going to help us grow in the right ways and avoid some of the predatory growth that often comes with new opportunities, especially in waterfront communities. So, that would be my focus, is looking at what is our end goal? How do we want to see this area grow? What types of growth do we want to attract? And inversely, what types of growth do we want to avoid? And plan accordingly with ordinances that are going to help protect the culture and the character of the area that we all love.
Okay, yeah, I'm kind of aware of what's going on with all those little plots down there, but you know, you gotta look at your planning, commission, and zoning. But also, you said, three to four years. I'm thinking it's gonna be longer than that, because why I say that, the Deltaville area to run sewer all the way down, that's gonna take quite a bit of money. And right now, we don't know exactly how much that's gonna cost. And to me, I don't want the county to grow so fast till you can't manage it, and then your tax rates go way up. So that's what you gotta think about. With growth and water and sewer, we're gonna get water and sewer, but you gotta think about it. It's gonna take time, and then it's gonna take a lot of support from the board, making good decisions, you know, because I'm gonna tell you, I'm not gonna raise your taxes to get water all the way down to Deltaville if it gotta, to cost a lot of money for everybody, because you gotta look at, we got good water and sewer up in Jamaica District, but down here, it's Stingray Point, where you got a lot of problems. And I'm just keeping it real. You gotta have to sit back and think about what you're doing when you do it, and it's gonna take some time. So, three to four years, no. Ten years, three males, and ten days, five hours.
Hey, fellas. These are volume buttons. Wayne, you can turn it way up.
Test, test, test. Let me see how those things working now. Okay. I've raised five children, and as each one of them getting ready to leave the nest, I gave them some advice. And I said, what I want you to do is to imagine what you want your life to look like ten years from now, and then you can do everything in your power. All your energy should be directed towards achieving those goals. Well, it's the same thing with government. We have to have a real clear vision of where we want this community, this county, but particularly, I'm interested in Deltaville here, what we want it to look like twenty-five years from now. I've heard one person suggest that they want it to look like Hilton Head. My feeling is if you wanted to live in Hilton Head, move to Hilton Head. This is, I want to see, I want to preserve the character, the friendly atmosphere, the local businesses that we have here in Deltaville. And so I think that once we determine how we want to go, where we want to be, we can develop the goals and the objectives and the benchmarks to achieve that. But until that time, we're just gonna be spending money without really having a big plan. I mean, does that sound familiar to you? So, I think that we can, we have to be very careful about how we proceed. Now, on the other side of the coin, there are people down in the lower part of the county that really don't have good septic systems, that don't have good water, and it's important to be able to help all of our citizens. But on the other hand, and I think that just residential development down at Stingray Point would not be a bad thing. It adds to our base, our tax base, and heaven knows, we need to have some, a little broader tax base right now because our population's shrinking. So that would be great, but I really don't want to see any large-scale residential condominiums or anything like that going on down there. So, I think that these are all important things that we have to consider. And then we have to decide how we're gonna pay for all this. We have, if you ask people up in Saluda, they don't have any idea. How many of you would go out and buy a house or a real expensive car or something like that, not having any idea how much it's gonna cost or how you're gonna pay for it? But that's seems to be what we're doing here. So, I think we have to tread very carefully in this area.
I agree with most of what's been set up here as far as controlling growth. The way you control growth is through zoning. You need to make sure you got strong zoning laws. You need to make sure that, you know, people can understand where they can do certain things, including single-family homes. I think a lot of those nine hundred lots, especially down at Stingray Point, are twenty-five foot wide lots that when they were subdivided in the thirties or the forties, were twenty-five foot lots, and you bought a number of them. My house sits on four twenty-five foot lots, and it's all through Stingray Point down there. So, those platted lots, they're not really, I don't think, buildable as twenty-five foot wide lots, but that's a zoning issue. I think that, you know, the Weldon Cooper Center for Population Growth predicts Middlesex County growing about five percent by 2050. Now, they don't know about water and sewer, probably. That's twenty nineteen projections, and you know, here we are in twenty twenty-three, and we got changes coming. But this isn't an area of the state that is slated for big growth. I think if you, as Randy said, you know, our population is basically staying flat or maybe even declining some, and I don't think that having water or sewer is gonna change that drastically. It's, you know, it will provide some opportunities, if you have sewer, wherever it is in the county. I'm not just saying down here, but wherever it is in the county, it'll provide opportunities for businesses when they want to connect. Water does the same thing for people. The one thing about Pine Top, there's two things. One is, the sewer coming down here is the most expensive sewer in the county. But the second thing is, is there's over six hundred of the seven hundred water connections are down here in Pine Top, and especially down here towards the point. So, if you want, in order to connect to sewer, you have to have water. So, there's a real dichotomy here of, you know, the needs. We also have our septic systems, especially down at Stingray Point, that when these high tides come and these floods come, they go underwater. And what happens to them? They overflow, they end up in the Chesapeake Bay, the water table's climbing. All of those things are happening. So, you know, the question of sewer is something that actually has been considered for quite some time, for over, I know Wayne would know this better than I do, ten or twelve years. The Board of Supervisors has been addressing water and sewer in the county, and they've set aside eight hundred thousand dollars a year, until last year, when they did over a million, for sewer. So they actually have been doing the planning and looking ahead. I think that zoning is the most important thing. I have a lot of experience with zoning. I've used zoning to my advantage in many projects. I understand what developers and builders are looking for, and I understand how, if you want to control them, you need to tailor your zoning laws to do that. And I think it's very important. We have some holes in our waterfront commercial, and we have holes in our commercial as well, where people can come in and build projects that are way bigger than what the zoning allows, and I think we gotta get that fixed. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Jesse, I think question number two begins with you.
Yes.
While emergency calls for the rescue squad are increasing, volunteerism is decreasing. What are your thoughts regarding this ever widening circumstance and solutions to remedy that challenge?
Well, I can tell you, by being on the Volunteer Urbana Fire Department, I can see a decline in younger people wanting to join. And I think we really need to have some type of incentive. I'm just saying for the fire department, but the rescue squads too, but it's been a blessing that down here in Deltaville, you know, you're a hybrid. You know, you have half-paid and then half-volunteer. But as for fire departments, I can say that we need to do some more incentives for the firefighters, to encourage more youth to come out and education to help support that, because sometime in the future, if you don't have the support of youth and building up to go in to help firefighters and rescue squad, then you're gonna have to go to all-paid. But right now, we're blessed to have, most of our firefighters are volunteer. And then, like I said before, the rescue squad is hybrid. But my question is, would say that education, some type of incentive for your volunteers, and also, we do use a lot with grants to help support the fire departments and rescue squads, River County Community Foundations and different grant writing. But anyway, I feel that the only way that we can really get this problem straight, and they may not be able to get it straight, it's all depend on getting the volunteers out and some incentives.
Okay, yeah. Our public safety organizations, especially our rescue squad, needs immediate attention. Number of qualified experienced volunteers has diminished, while the number of rescue calls has more than doubled in the last five years. I think COVID really gave us a real, a real problem there. A lot of the older members stopped running. A few years ago, the squad began paying a private firm called ESS to supply supplemental manpower when the volunteers were not available. First, they started out ten, fifteen percent of the calls in Deltaville. The Urbana Rescue Squad folded, so the Deltaville Rescue Squad took responsibility for that, but that's one hundred percent now paid. The cost of that manpower has increased significantly and is not sustainable. New contracts coming up soon, and they're getting, again, they're requesting a very large increase, and we don't have an alternative as far as paid crews. That's the only firm we could get who would be able to do this. So I'm gonna take a two-prong approach to the problem. First, I would spearhead an effort with the county administration and squad leadership to attract, recruit, and retain volunteers. It's almost a stop-gap measure, folks, because this is a nationwide problem. Volunteerism is going, and in the larger jurisdictions now, it's all paid. And we're gonna head that way, but I would like to maintain the volunteer rescue squad here as long as we can. We partnered with the high school to introduce students to the EMS career path. The opportunities there are great, and Um, the opportunities there are great and and, um, until I think we can work that way. I I had gone to job fairs at, uh, M H S before and we actually got some volunteers out of that, but it hasn't happened in a while. Second, this problem is not unique to Middlesex County. All the surrounding jurisdictions, Gloucester, Lancaster, Matthews, everybody is facing this problem and they're handling it in different ways. I would like to find out who has the best solution. I kinda like the one they have in Lancaster. But, uh, I think we could save hundreds of thousands of dollars by doing it that way. And finally, I'd find out, uh, or or what other alternatives we have to to a paid system, uh, and increase our volunteerism. So that's it.
Um, first, I'd like to say that these gentlemen that serve on the fire department and rescue squad probably individually saved this county, you know, seventy-five, eighty thousand dollars a year, if not more, by their their volunteer work. And think of all the, uh, volunteers that are in the fire department and rescue squad. It's pretty amazing. So thank you to them for the service. I think that it's a, it's a a problem, as Randy said, that's coming. It's something that Middlesex has to face. Middlesex has been facing it, um, you know, spending over six hundred thousand up in Urbana and and I'm not sure what they're spending down here, but it's it's been continuously added to the budget and it's gonna be continuously be a problem. So we need to hold on to the volunteers as long as we can. Um, I was happy to see, I went to the, uh, Middlesex High School Career Fair today and, um, was happy to see the fire department there. And so once again, the volunteers are taking time out of their day to go there and talk to the young people at the high school about, you know, coming to and volunteering at the Middlesex Fire Department. And they had a pretty good turnout there. It was really great to see. So I think that it is a problem. It is a reason that we need to worry about our taxes going up and it's a reason we need to figure out a way to pay for it. And, uh, we certainly can't pay for any of these things by sitting still. So you've got your rescue squad, you've got your fire department. You know, there was a presentation maybe a month and a half ago by the jail board that said, just be aware that the prices for our deputies that work at the jail are gonna go up significantly and we're gonna be hitting you for a budget increase, um, for the jail. So, you know, all of those things are coming and I think we all know it and we've seen the 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 increase in costs for labor for everybody, private businesses and everything alike. And I think we just need to be aware that we need to, um, be thinking about how we're gonna budget for it. And I think there's, you know, I I agree with reaching out and finding more volunteers, but across the board, across the board, young people are not coming in the same way they used to. I will say, though, that you, the way to get young people involved is by having, is by giving them not necessarily a mission, a broad mission, like I wanna be in the fire department, but small missions where they say, where you say, what do you think about doing this? What do you think about taking a smaller piece of this? And people say, okay, I can do that. And that's one way to, I think, appeal to younger people. Um, we're finding that at a lot of the organizations I work with, that they just don't necessarily believe in the entire organization, but they're willing to help with a particular mission. And I think maybe we have to start rethinking how we talk to these younger people and what we ask them to do, so.
Mr. Evans, I understand you have a little bit of a cold, so I hope you're able to catch some of what was said. Do you want me to repeat the question?
Go ahead.
Okay. While emergency calls for the rescue squad are increasing, volunteerism is decreasing. What are your thoughts regarding this ever widening circumstance and solutions to remedy the challenge?
Yeah, I I believe that we've gotta embark on a marketing campaign to help people understand the attractiveness of volunteering with the fire and rescue squad. It truly is something that is of value to the community. It's something that I think we can, uh, present it in a way that's appealing to young people. I think we can partner with the schools even more and start to drive that, that, you know, plant that seed when they're in school and get them involved in fire and rescue. I did it. I was a volunteer with a heavy extraction team. I was, you know, involved in fire and rescue and volunteering, uh, both in the service and on the civilian side. And I think it's something that is appealing to young people. We just have to market it in a way that that drives those numbers up and helps us to to build that, I guess, that habit at a young age. I I would, I would agree with what Randy said with regard to, you know, the cost savings. You know, what you would spend in marketing towards this effort would would come back threefold in what you're gonna save over trying to go to a fully-paid service. So that that would be my approach, is to go through, go go after it in a marketing way and try to put together a messaging campaign that really speaks to the young folks in our community and 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 really everybody. But I I I talk more about the young folks in our community because I think if you get them started in high school, it builds on that and it becomes a lifelong mission for many of them.
Thank you. This next question has multiple parts, so it's a challenge. So I I I anticipate repeating it. Of the nearly fifty questions that we've received from the public for the candidates in the forums, uh, no individual topic was addressed more than financing of the proposed county sewer system. And we would like to address these topics next. Question number three. The cost of the proposed sewer system is now estimated to be over forty million dollars and continues to rise. In January, the Southside Sentinel quoted our county administrator in a school and a board of supervisors meeting that, quote, "The revenues are not going to be sufficient to cover the cost of deployment," end quote. This statement has echoed previous statements from Hampton Road Sanitation District Leadership that, quote, "Sewer is a losing proposition without subsidies," end quote. And that the proposed water, excuse me, the proposed sewer system will, quote, "require significant subsidies to make it work," end quote. All right, first part, knowing this, do you support cutting our losses and pumping the brakes on the sewer system project? Or do you support moving forward and incurring the increased construction costs and necessary subsidies? Part two, if the project moves forward and you are in favor of that, would you support an increase in the real estate and personal property taxes to subsidize annual costs? And three, if not by increased taxes, what would your specific plan be on how the county should obtain the funding to pay for the sewer project? So first is move forward with the project. Second, do you support an increase in real estate or personal property taxes? And thirdly, if not, how else should we obtain funding? Thank you.
Okay. Right, it was the, that's actually the second most popular question I have to answer. The first one is, how are you related to the Cootenays?
I've never forgotten any.
So, so after I explain that carefully, then I, then I, then go on. Uh, no, that this this, there really is a serious issue. Um, forty, I heard forty-one million dollars. That is a tremendous amount of money. And has anybody here ever seen a project like this that ever came in on budget? So we're talking about really seriously more money than that. Right now, our 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 national economy is is terrible. Right now, you know, the inflation is up and, uh, the dollar's not what it used to be and interest rates are up and houses aren't selling and we're gonna have a a real trouble, I think, trying to increase our tax base. So on the one hand, it's nice to be able to have the water and sewer, to be able to add, uh, businesses, to add, um, residences and that sort of thing. But I I would favor, uh, at least, uh, looking at truncating the 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 sewer system for now anyway to to say, this is how far we can go. If this is gonna be something that's cost-effective, we bring it down this far and we can add in some sort of business opportunity zone that will thrive because of the water and sewer, then it will be money well spent. But if it's something that that, uh, is is more of a of a nice-to-have situation, then I think that's something that we're gonna have to look at. Can we, can we stop it where it is right now? And then perhaps pick it up as when the economy improves? I've heard, well, it's, uh, you know, right now, we have to hit where the iron's hot because it's on sale, you know, because we can get a certain grant or a certain, um, some sort of extra money that we can do, get to pay for this. I mean, that's like, if your friend says, well, I bought this, well, you didn't eat one. I know, but it was on sale. We don't, we, we shouldn't have to just go out and buy something because it's on sale. So, um, I think that we have to tread very carefully about this. We have to, uh, um, I don't wanna see us in a, in a real dire financial situation because remember, folks, we're not like the federal government. We have to pay our bills every year. We can't, we can't go in, you know, into a deficit. That that's, it's the responsibility that we need to pay it. And we have other problems we're talking about. I I could talk all day about the EMS system and what we need to do to fix it. So, uh, anyway, that that would be my my feeling on it. So I'm, no, I don't wanna raise anybody's property taxes to do this or the property tax rate because it's already gone up from, what, thirty-four percent to sixty-two percent in the last three decades, so that would be my answer.
I would clearly, I would not vote for forty-one million dollars worth of sewer. The county's got a thirty-million-dollar budget and forty-one million dollars worth of sewer is just not appropriate. That being said, I think that, um, the deployment of sewer is happening right now in the county. They're moving forward with deployment. As I said earlier, the county for the last ten or twelve years has built into the budget, um, eight hundred thousand dollars each year. So you've actually been taxed towards the sewer system, if you think about it that way. Um, so the county could build up the reserves and then that would carry forward at the current tax rate. I think that, um, with current interest rates, let's say the county could get money at five percent, uh, eight hundred thousand, you know, would probably cover maybe fifteen million dollars, uh, worth of financing for sewer. Um, you know, there's grants out there that the county's working on and all kinds of things. So I think you're gonna get to a point, there's a, there's, there's sewer that is ready to be deployed and will be deployed and then there's sewer that is still out there and being studied. So the, my first answer is I would never agree to forty million dollars worth of sewer being deployed. That being said, there is a real opportunity in the county and I and I applaud the Board of Supervisors for the last ten or twelve years to be forward-thinking about this. Hampton Roads is running a sewer line. Basically, they took over the Urbana Sewer Plant and didn't wanna operate it and they made a grand plan to pick up all the small sewer plants, Saludas and Urbanas, and run them all the way down to Yorktown. They're doing that on their own with their own money. That is an opportunity for the county to pony into that and not build and operate a sewer plant. Um, the the operation of sewer and sewer plant has never been successful or profitable or even reasonable. It's terrible. So that is a real opportunity. If we were, you know, twenty years from now looking at getting sewer and we had to think about building a sewer plant, it wouldn't happen. It just wouldn't happen. There's just no way. So I think there's an opportunity and I think the county is, you know, the supervisors have been moving their way through it. Um, and where they are right now is ready to deploy a couple of, a couple of the smaller systems in localized areas in order to support business. And then it just decides where it's gonna go from there. That's a decision that the next supervisors are gonna have to face and 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 look at. And their choices are to move forward, move forward a little bit, don't move forward at all. But I wouldn't abandon, and there's really no reason to abandon what we've decided so far or what the county has decided so far as far as deploying sewer because if we don't do anything and your EMS charges go up and and all these other things go up and all your jail charges, your taxes cannot stay fixed. So we do not, I do not think we can grow our way out of this problem, but I do think that allowing businesses and providing opportunities for businesses to come and providing opportunities for additional people and houses, probably summer homes down here in Stingray Point, is a great way to enhance our tax base.
So I would pump the brakes on the project and I'll tell you why. I've looked at the project, I've looked at the numbers, I've asked some questions of the board. But if you ask five different people, you get five different answers or you find out that they're not sure how much it's gonna cost or where it's gonna go or what are we gonna do with it? In the Code of Ethics, the fourth item says to seek to find and use the most equitable, efficient, effective, and economic means for getting tasks accomplished. So I would pump the brakes on this until we understand what the costs involved are, what the benefit is, how we're gonna pay for it, and are there businesses that are lining up to hook up to the sewer or are we building it in the hopes that they'll come? So I don't see a problem with taking a pause and understanding what it is we're asking you to pay for. That would be my position on it. I I wanna ask tough questions. I wanna find out exactly what we're intending to do with taxpayer spending and what the benefit is gonna be to the taxpayers. So far, I haven't heard it. So I would be in favor of of putting the brakes on this until we understand it better. Uh, the other thing I would say is, I I can't think of a worse time for a construction project with the costs going through the roof the way they are right now. I mean, we've got big projects in the county that private companies and equity firms have already put the brakes on because they recognize the cost of building right now. So the smart money seems to be, hold what you have, get your plan together, understand what it is you wanna accomplish, and let's make sure that the stockholders, all of you, understand what we're asking you to pay for. So that would be my my approach.
All right, well, I'm the only one up here that's involved in it right now. And I could tell you, since two thousand eighteen, we've been putting eight hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars because we knew that Hampton Sanitation was gonna, to, uh, they took over the Bannock Plant, they took over the jail. And and naturally, the main trunk line is going straight to Matthews and going down to Yorktown. So we knew that, so that's why some money was put aside. And then also, we had grant money that, uh, that we, that that we're gonna get to go along with that. But as as you, as I can say right now, Coach Corner, Toppin's, and Saluda, which really, those ones gonna go through. And then when we say, hey, when we get other bids in, then you say, hold up, this gonna cost too much money. Uh, we gonna have to hold back and and wait. Because that's, that's when I said earlier, uh, that that someone said, three years of sewer coming down to Deltaville, it's not gonna happen. I'm gonna let you know that right now. And that's how we, that's how we got it set up. Because I can tell you, we wouldn't even be talking about sewer if Hampton Sanitation didn't take over Bannock Plant. So let's, let's, let's remember that. Okay, so at any time, as as grant monies and we gotta have collections, we gotta put the collection in. And then we got force mains. So, you know, you, you, it's gonna go to Matthews, all right? You got Graves Point, that's a, that, that, you know, that's gonna be probable because Graves Point gonna have a lot of campers and everything and you're protecting the bay. So, you know, that's good. But as you get all around and get into Hartfield, it might take a right turn and head on over to to, uh, Matthews and hook up there. But as going to down Deltaville, that's another big elephant in the room. I'm just letting you know, it's a big elephant. And at any time, we can say, hey, it's gonna cost too much money once we get the bid in. It's a dead issue and that's common sense. Think about that. So you have to start somewhere. And I, and I could tell you, we wouldn't even be talking about it if 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 they, uh, Bannock, I mean, H H H R S D didn't take that over. So, you know, it's it's a, it's a process working and really, things happen. And and I'm gonna tell you right now, a lot of people don't know, a long time ago, the jail was gonna put, cover the whole, I wasn't on the board then, the whole Saluda area. They they said, we gotta have a plant and we gonna cover the whole Saluda area. And you know what happened? Um, they voted it down and then what ended up happening, they built their own plant. And I I just just imagine what the Saluda area would be if that had happened. But that's the water over the dam now. But you know, if we gonna expect, uh, gradual economic, uh, businesses and different things in the county, then, uh, we had to start from somewhere. We know how we can pay for it through grants and loans at a low interest rate right now. And then, if it, if it costs too much to go down to Stingray Point, it's not gonna happen. And 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 Board of Supervisors will vote on that.
All right, question number four. Between every voting cycle, the question of boat tax comes before the county for consideration. Of our neighboring waterfront counties, Lancaster and Gloucester have eliminated their boat tax in an effort to lure boat owners to their marinas while Matthews and Essex have maintained theirs. The positive of removing the boat tax is potentially helping our vital marine industry, while the negative is that a large percentage of county revenue coming from boats and the removal would likely force an increase in taxes on real estate and personal property. What is your position on the issue of boat tax?
As I stated in my opening, um, I was a marina owner in Gloucester, a two-hundred-slip marina. And, um, we lobbied Gloucester to drop their boat tax. Hampton had dropped theirs and we lobbied Gloucester to do it. At that time, Gloucester probably had a forty-million-dollar budget and probably got about two hundred thousand dollars in boat taxes. At that time, Gloucester probably had a $40 million budget and probably got about $200,000 in boat taxes. Way bigger budget and way less tax money from boats. They agreed to do it. At my marina, for every boat that left because of the recession, a new boat came in from one of the areas, including Middlesex, that still had a boat tax that was higher. So that business held steady all the way through. I know the implications of the boat tax. I know what it means when you go to zero and what the boats do. And we've seen it here in Middlesex. That being said, I don't think that the boat tax should be reduced, needs to be reduced anymore. I think we just hold where we are, leave the boat tax where it is. I would be against raising the boat tax. But I do believe that we can hold the boat tax and I think the marinas will do all right. And some of the marinas told me that they could get behind that. So I think that that's the way I would approach it. I think that our boating infrastructure and marinas are just the most important thing. You get 60% of the tax revenue from Middlesex County out of Pine Top, out of Delphville. And the boats and the marines and the employment and everything else that happens down here is a huge part of that. You know, you've got an 11,000 square foot West Marine store. That's as big as they have in places like Salisbury, Maryland. You know, it's a big store. And that's because of the amount of people that come down here and buy, you know, from there. It's a very important part. Along with the boats is tourism. That invites huge amounts of tourism. That feeds your restaurants and your grocery stores and everything else in the summer. And it brings people here to homes and summer homes and everything else. Those are great tax dollars to have. When people come in with summer homes, their kids aren't going to the schools. They're here, they're spending money, they're having a good time. We need to make sure that we protect that. And that starts with the boats and the marinas and that throughout the county. And that's throughout the county. Urbana's got the same thing. They've got all kinds of, you know, anywhere where we have slips and the boats, it's a very important thing to protect. And it's jobs. And I really think that our local small businesses that are here are where our job growth is going to come from. All of them are looking for employees. All of them are looking to expand. And I think it's just important. You've got Zimmerman's Marine who's moving from one location to another so that they can expand. That's great news from the county. Thank goodness they're not leaving the county and going somewhere else. We need to make sure our boat business down here is protected.
I'm generally an advocate of reducing taxes. In the case of the boat tax, I would keep it right where it is. My goal with reducing taxes would start with getting some control on the real estate tax and the personal property tax that we're currently paying. The real estate tax, as you've all felt the pain, has continued to rise. The county is currently talking about the real estate tax only being 78% of where they want it to be. So if you read the tea leaves, that means the real estate tax is getting ready to jump again. I think we need to control spending and lower taxes. But you have to do it in that order. So we need to take a hard look at what we're spending money on and figure out how we can become more efficient. Like that statement I read you out of the Code of Ethics for the Board of Supervisors. More efficient, more effective, more cost-effective with what we're doing. So on the issue of the boat tax, no, I would leave the boat tax exactly where it is. I wouldn't repeal it. But I wouldn't seek to raise the boat tax because tourism is a critical issue for us. It's definitely an industry we want to continue to grow. But I would leave it at its current rate.
Yes, for the boat taxes, as you know, we have 43 marinas in Middlesex County. All our surrounding counties, Essex has four, Gloucester has nine, Lancaster had eight. And we had a big to-do one year, I'm just going to let you know, about five tons and above. And when we did reduce five tons and above, the county taxes lost about $200,000 a year. But you know, regardless of that, I still say we leave it like it is. You wouldn't have West Marine here if it wasn't a good place for boats in Middlesex County. You know, it's a very big impact in Middlesex County, the boating industry. And I'm not going to say I would leave it there. But I'd just like to say that, you know, when we decided to lower it for the wealthy, I didn't go for it. Because if you can afford five tons and above, you should be able to pay the tax. And that's just my opinion. But I wouldn't mess with it. But I'm just letting you know, when we did have that come across us and was voted, that, you know, everything would die out if, you know, if you didn't lower the taxes on it five tons and above. But it went through and I'm good with it. I'm good with it. It's just that I know we lost $200,000 from people that could afford it.
Okay. I have a boat. You could probably put it on this table at that size. But I don't mind paying the tax on that. We have taxes on RVs, we have taxes on a lot of things. But I've talked to several different marina owners and boaters and there really isn't a real consensus among them either. I did notice that even during the winter, if you go down to the marinas, the ones that I visited, they're still full. So and I think that we're not just talking about marina boats. We're talking about people who have boats, their own private boats. I was out on the Pianca Tank yesterday and going along the Middlesex side and I just saw boat after boat after boat. And I don't think that those people are going to take their boat out of their boathouse and take it to another county to park it so they don't have to pay a boat tax. But I agree with everyone here. I mean, I certainly have an open mind like I would on anything. But my feeling right now is I certainly wouldn't raise it. I think that it was a good compromise in what they had before. So no, I wouldn't be comfortable changing anything right now until I really knew more about it.
All right. We are going to take a brief five to six-minute break so that the candidates can refresh themselves and drink some water. And we'll come back in five minutes. Thank you. All righty. Is everybody ready? Okay. Who are we starting with now? I've lost track. We're back to Mr. Evans. Right. Question five. A large percentage of property in Middlesex County is within the land use program. Minimum qualification for inclusion in the program are five acres of open space or 20 acres in woodland. Active farming, pasture, or timber production is not required. While this program benefits large landowners, farmers, and foresters, their lesser tax contribution increases the tax burden on other property owners. What is your position on modifying the program to better equalize the real estate tax burden across all landowners?
Well, that's a timely question. We were just talking about my farm. You know, I think you could look at what the impact would be to increase the acreage requirement or look at what the impact would be to have some sort of active farming on it. But then again, you know, timbering is a form of farming. That's a form of agriculture. I'm a big proponent of the land use credit. I've not taken advantage of it as of yet, but we're considering it. I think it's a huge benefit to protect our farmland and protect the, again, the character of the county, what we all appreciate. I mean, if you ask anybody who moves here, why'd you come to Middlesex? Well, we enjoy the wide open spaces. We enjoy seeing the farms. We enjoy, you know, that lifestyle. Land use credit is how you protect that. So I would be willing to look at it from a critical review. But I wouldn't want to do something that would adversely impact the culture and the character of the county. Because I think the land use credit is one of those items that helps support our farmers who are having, you know, who are struggling as it is to try to make ends meet. So I think the land use credit is important.
I always have supported land use because just like you're saying, farmers and also your forestry people, we want them to be able to, you know, farm. And if you think about it, you have ups and downs in farming. You have a dry spell or you have a wet spell. And, you know, and a lot of times, it's hard for them. Some years it's good, some years it's bad. But, you know, I wouldn't want to burden our farmers because I think it's better for us to have more farmland. Because naturally, the Jamaica District is more forestry farm. And even, like I say, we have the drag and run. And, you know, it's more rural. And I would not like to do that to the citizens in Middlesex County. I know we have farms all over the place. I can also remember a little boy coming down here and nothing was farm, was nothing but farm. Now it's being developed. You know, you have a lot of different subdivisions and things like that. But that's just progress. But like I'm saying, I'm not interested in doing anything with farm use right at this time. Like Beth Heard said, you know, it's five acres. You tax five acres regularly and then all the others at a lesser rate. But then again, if you take it out of farm use, you got to remember, you got to pay the back taxes on it. So just remember that too. So that gives them incentive to say, hey, I want generations and generations of farm. And that's why I like the Braves and the Richisons and all up in the county. I'm blessed that they're there because they buy up all the farmland, they tend the farmland, and I like to see the farms.
I also, I've spent a lot of time talking to farmers. I'm related to a lot of farmers. I understand the land use tax situation very well. I think that, first of all, I don't think that there's three votes to change that anyway in Saluda. But I think that there have been a number of studies done that showed that the increase in revenue would not be significant. Also, I've spoken to farmers. They said if you got rid of the land use, then we would find some real creative ways to shield us from those, from those extra taxes. And one of those would be to put your land in a conservation easement, that sort of thing. And so then the county would really be worse off. I do agree with Jim. I think that there may be, we may look at some of the smaller tracks, some of the people that just are taking advantage. They've got a, you know, a five-acre field next to their house that they're not really using for anything. But it is maybe part of their yard, basically. And I think that it's not really reasonable for, you know, for that. So I'm not totally close to making some minor modifications to it. But as far as the farms go and the timbering and the woodlands and everything, I would absolutely. I mean, farmers are the people that really built this. I mean, farmers are the people that really built this county from the sixteen hundreds. They're the ones who really are responsible for Middlesex County being here. And the last thing I would want to do would be to alter that in any significant way. This is a beautiful rural place and that's the way we'd want to keep it.
Yeah, I agree with everyone up here. I wouldn't want to do anything with the land use tax. I think that the county made an adjustment to the land use tax, what they're paying, I think, two years ago maybe Wayne, or three years ago, two or three years ago. Yeah, they made an adjustment upwards for what they were paying for the land. I think one of the strongest arguments for land use is that farmers and people that are raising forestry products aren't using the county services. You know, they're not using the schools and they're not using, you know, a lot of this stuff. I mean, hopefully they're not using the fire departments unless something terrible happens. But, so I think that's a good, I think that's one of the stronger arguments as well in that, you know, having them and having the land stay rural is important, and I think it's important for the makeup of the county. And along with, I think, everybody up here, nobody wants to see the county, you know, see these places get cut up into little teeny lots and things like that, which, you know, that's what it prompts you to do is take your primary road frontage and things like that, cut it up into little teeny lots and sell it so you can make money to pay your, you know, pay your taxes. And I don't think that's beneficial. I think it's nice to, you know, come down the road. I think it's good for the county. So, I would not be in favor of adjusting the land use tax anytime.
Mr. Jesse. Numerous Virginia counties have received permission from the state legislature to increase the local sales tax by up to one percent in order to fund school capital projects. With a forty-five million dollar high school renovation on the county's adopted capital improvement plan, would you support applying for this additional sales tax levy to help fund our school capital projects?
Well, I would just have to look at everything on that right now. I'm thinking for our schools, we have very good school systems here in Middlesex County, number one. Yeah, we do need some improvement up at the high school. So, the question is, do we build a new school or do we add on and remodel the school that we have? Right now, I know we're still paying on the two-story wing that we had there. And right now, they're looking at renovate. And right now, I really don't know the price of it right now, but if there's a way to levy the sale tax for business here, to, because we have a lot of people that transit here from the campgrounds and everywhere, and they come in here and they buy things from sale tax. Think about that, cigarettes and different things like that. So, you know, we do have a lot of people that come here. We've got four or five campgrounds, they come here, they spend money and then they go away. So, if we do levy some sale tax, a lot of that comes from people that transit here too, even though the locals do. But we don't have a lot of businesses that are here, period, other than the campground. So, I would like to see that happen to help out, to offset the taxes on schools.
Well, that's kind of a tough one. I am physically very conservative. I hate to see any taxes raised. I kind of admire the way they do things in Florida. Florida, they have no state income tax, but you go down there and you notice that the sales tax is higher, the lodging taxes, the restaurant taxes, all those, because those are more often paid by the tourists that come to Florida. So, they put all their revenue, they get the revenue from the tourists rather than the people. They have homestead exemptions on their property taxes and things. So, it's really an advantage. So, it would be something that, I'm not really sure how much revenue we'd be able to pick up from a one cent increase because as Wayne said, we're not, I just don't think we spend as much money in this county that would make a real, real significant difference with that one cent. Talking about the campgrounds, we have like two major league campgrounds in this county. Plus, we have a number of smaller ones. And now we're going to, I understand that they're going to be putting in, up in his neck of the woods, they're going to be putting up another really big campground. And so, perhaps if there's some way we could find to put a tax on the spaces, the taxes that they do there, something like that would be great, but we'd have to work through the state to do that. So, but as far as the one cent, I'm not, I really can't take a position on it now because I haven't really looked at what kind of an impact it would have.
I think the basis of the question is the schools. And, you know, I'm not sure about a sales tax and what that would mean, a one cent sales tax. But I do agree, like, a tourism tax. When I built the first hotel in Gloucester, we went to the county and said, we would like you to implement a tourism tax and tax hotel rooms and because you're required under state law to put a certain percentage of that towards tourism for advertising. So, we went to the county and said, we want you to tax us and we want to build that tourism, which they didn't have a tourism department. It's a very effective tax. Right now, the Economic Development Authority is partially funded by tourism tax. And this year, our budget increased by, I was going to say fifteen, maybe twenty percent because of the increase in the tourism tax that came in, of the tax dollars that came in. So, it's a very important tax and it's a very important way, you know, to pay for things. The other thing is, the county's got a little over five hundred thousand coming off of their debt service. Five hundred thousand of debt service coming off, I think, in twenty twenty-six. And then they've got another million coming off in twenty-seven and twenty-eight. So, there's going to be a reduction in what the county is paying of about a million and a half dollars by twenty-twenty-eight. So, I think what that tells us is if you want to target that for schools, and what is, again, what does a million and a half dollars pay for? It depends on what your interest rate is. You know, if it's five percent, it might be twenty million dollars. I don't, you know, I don't, there's different ways of doing the numbers. And there's grants and everything else. But I think the important thing is, is that what we probably ought to be looking at is maybe doing these school projects in twenty-twenty-eight or twenty-twenty-seven. That means we need to be planning and developing the plan right now. I was fortunate to tour the schools with Dr. Seitz. And, you know, she showed me things that the staff has been doing in there, building plywood walls to make, you know, spaces in different areas and just making things work as best they could. I'm not saying the schools are in terrible shape. I'm just saying that there's a lot of things that they're looking at and they try to make do because they don't want to spend the money now if they're close to getting the buildings renovated. Why come to the county and ask them for a million and a half or two million dollars to divide up some spaces if we're going to come back and spend ten million dollars to actually renovate the school? And so, I think looking at that and with the idea that in three and a half short years, all that other debt service will be off and it'll be time to go, I think is the way to go. I also think that that's a place that I could really provide a lot of leadership with my construction background and my business background, understanding the plans, understanding, you know, architects and engineers and working with them. I think I could add a lot to the board's conversation about how those projects would unfold. And so, I think that that's a big thing.
This battery change brought to you by Wavak.
Thank you.
Okay. Ready? All right. So, on the issue of trying to increase the sales tax, you know, I would agree with Randy about exploring opportunities where we can capitalize on a transient tax. You know, tourist tax, campground slots, things like that. But thirty-four percent of this county are people on a fixed income, retirees, folks that, you know, are already struggling. So, I'd be very apprehensive about measures that are going to raise tax rates higher. I'm more in favor of taking a granular look at where we're spending the money we're currently spending and evaluating how we can be more efficient. I know that doesn't make sense, government and efficient. But I think there are some things that we can do locally in the way that we're spending our money allocating our funds, excuse me, allocating your funds and do it smarter and do it better. And some of that, to Joe's point, is timing on construction projects. Some of it, to Randy's point, is looking at, you know, how can we evaluate opportunities that don't impact people who are living here year-round? But I would be opposed to raising the taxes on our citizens that are here year in and year out because they're already struggling with this.
All right. As economic centers in adjacent counties are growing, Middlesex County is fast becoming a rural suburbia to Lancaster, Gloucester, and Essex. Due to geography, our seasonal tourist industry seems to flourish. And due to demographics, our service industry to seniors appears healthy. What are your thoughts of realistic diversification to our economy that would increase the tax base and add to the quality of life in Middlesex?
Oh, okay. We do have a kind of a shrinking tax base. If you look at the businesses in Deltaville, when I came down here, there were a lot of restaurants that are not there any longer. It's kind of tough to see a for sale sign in front of Taylor's. That's been here since, I don't know when, certainly before me. We don't have any banks left in Deltaville. I'm sure that has a lot more to do with the changes in the banking industry, but still, it's kind of tough when every time you want to cash your check, you have to go all the way to Hartfield. What I would advocate would be to take certain portions of this county. What really would I have in mind, I think, would be a great place for an opportunity zone would be between Harmony Grove and through Hartfield because it's, that's really where we have two major thoroughfare, two major roads running concurrently, Route thirty-three and Route three. They run together through that area. Everybody going from Lancaster to Gloucester and everyone going from Saluda to Deltaville is going to have to go through Hartfield. And so, I would advocate, particularly if we may look at wanting to bring the sewer down that far so that we could create a zone where we would welcome new businesses, retail, hospitality, services. And I think that if we can get that in, right now, we see our kids, they graduate from high school. While they do, they leave. They don't have jobs here unless they want to work at Dollar General or someplace. So, it's, I think that we really need to take a look at that. Every time we get a new business in this county, we should be rejoicing. Every time we have some new residents, we should be happy about that because those are the people that are helping pay our taxes. Every time somebody moves out and is not replaced, that's just more of a burden, tax burden on the people who are here. And so, you're right. I think that Lancaster and Gloucester and those places, they're growing faster than we are. And I would like to see us start catching up to that.
I moved here on my own to start my business from scratch and built it, you know, up to what it is the Allen Group today. You don't get to pick businesses that come into an area. You can hope you can, you can wish for it, you can think, but you do not get to say, we need more restaurants. You have to find somebody that wants to open a restaurant. We need a brewery. You got to have somebody who wants to open a brewery. You know, you can't just hope it to happen. You can't get a cannon plant here unless you've got all the infrastructure ready to go. So, you know, as much as it's nice to talk about expansion and what businesses can we bring, the reality of it is, you have to take care of your existing businesses. You know, when Latel Sales wants to expand, luckily, they found a building here in the county to expand. Otherwise, they could go anywhere else they want. They could go to any other county. They just wanted more space. If it's not available here, go somewhere else. They can build sales, they sell them all over the country, probably all over the world. So, we want to be cognizant of what our businesses need. You know, we have businesses here that I don't think we really recognize as businesses. We've got Bay Aging. Bay Aging is probably our fourth largest employer. They get the majority of their money from federal and state tax, you know, from federal and state grants. They are a huge asset to what we do here. I met with Kathy Vessley, the CEO, and she said I'm the first person, if elected, I would be the first person that she's talked to in twenty-five years from the county in her office about what Beijing does and what they need, as opposed to what we might need from them. And so, I think it's things like that, reaching out to our existing businesses, finding out what they need, finding out how to partner with them and making sure that we give them what they need. Along with that, with the water and sewer in certain areas, you will have more opportunities for businesses. And there's many things that we could use here that a developer would come and build if we have the infrastructure for them to do it. They're not going to do it on septic systems. They haven't done it on septic systems. And septic regulations are much more difficult than they were twenty-five years ago when any of these places that are here were built. So, you do need infrastructure in certain localities in order to give the opportunities for the businesses.
I don't think we need to recreate the wheel. We have several areas that would bode well for industrial development. By industrial development, we have to strike a balance to maintain the character of the county, right? We don't want a shotgun approach where anybody and everybody who wants to come here, you know, we're swinging the doors wide open. We need to be selective. So, you know, recently, we had an opportunity for a dollar store in our historic district. And it was voted down by the citizens. We need to be selective in what we want to bring in. I think we can greatly attract more business around our airport. I think we can look at expanding around the racetrack. It's on a main artery, runs right through the county. To Joe's point, one of the infrastructure issues that we need to address, if we're going to try to attract business out there, is we don't have a fire station on seventeen. We need to have the ability to put a fire out and get to it in a timely manner. Our fire department does a great job with what they've been dealt. But for a county our size to not have a fire station on seventeen, the fastest route through this county, doesn't make a lot of sense. There's a good bit of this county that is better than ten miles from the nearest fire station. That's almost a twenty-minute response time. If you have a fire and you're waiting twenty minutes, it's over. The house is burned to the ground. So, we do need to look at infrastructure. We do need to plan for these expansions. But I also think we need to attract the kind of business that's going to fit in well with how we want to preserve the county. There's opportunities for logistics, for cross stocking facilities, for warehousing, for things that are relatively low impact to the community, but generate the tax revenue and broaden the tax base to help us control the taxes as we move forward. If we don't attract new business, if we can't broaden the tax base and we've not been very successful at increasing the population, then it all falls to the existing population that's here and all of our taxes continue to go up. So, I say again, we need to control spending, lower taxes, be more efficient in what we're doing, and be selective in what we bring in.
I would like to say that, you know, what we got going on in Middlesex County now, you got to understand, you got to have a workforce for whatever you get in here. It's hard finding good help. But number one, Middlesex is gradually growing. Because I can just remember Gloucester. And then you got Essex County. Gloucester's growing, Essex County, and we're right in the middle. We all understand that. But until you get But until you get water and sewer in certain areas, you gotta have that population. Now, I like the small mom-and-pop stores and stuff like that, because I can tell you, some of y'all might not have been around here during this ice storm, but we had Big John's right there. Nobody could get gas, and when all these trees were broken down, we had the small mom-and-pop store that had a generator that was getting gas to everybody. And those are the kind of stores that you're gonna get here and tell things progress as it goes on, then you'll get more and more people here, just like right now, broadband is coming up in the upper end of the county. And that's another plus for the county. But like I was saying before, yeah, we have an area that, yeah, it's seasonal, it's seasonal, but you can't have it both ways if you don't have the people to accommodate those. Because like I'm saying, you get a big business in here, then you have to service them. And where's the workforce coming from? You don't have a workforce. So, you know, slow gradual growth is what we're going right now, but it's coming this way, because we're getting close in, whether you know it or not. You see how fast Gloucester's growing, and I know even going around visiting people. We got people coming from Williamsburg, we got people coming from Gloucester, and all these areas coming to Middlesex County. Because we're a quiet community, but also a percentage of us commute every day, if it's not from Shipyard, Richmond, or whatever. It's a commuting community, but it's also a safe, and you can come home and be happy. But, you know, taxes are gonna fluctuate up and down. It's no easy answer about, you know, getting people here to solve all your problems, because one thing, you gotta service, you gotta service people. And also, I would like to say, we are working on a fire department up in that area. It hasn't all got out, but the details are working to be right on Seventeen.
I think it's you, Mr. Hyman. This is our final question of the evening. Lancaster County recently announced master plans for three new public waterfront spaces, including a public boat ramp and parks. Middlesex County's lack of developed public waterfront and beach facilities pales significantly in comparison to all three of our neighboring bayfront counties. What are your specific thoughts of significant investment in public waterfront and beachfront for our community? How will you approach potential issues with adjoining property owners, disposition of unused county-owned properties, and the acquisition and development of new waterfront amenities?
Waterfront access is huge, and I think as time goes on, it's be even more important. Right now, the county has a number of waterfront properties that are not being utilized. There's different reasons, small easements, too small an easement for traffic, maybe the park is small. When we sat down and evaluated the properties that Middlesex has right now, we looked at addressing some of those issues. I think that the reality of it is, not all parks have to be mammoth parks. You know, I think we don't need to provide access. There's places where you have little narrow pieces of property that the county owns that lead to a beach and to the water. We could call those a pocket park, where just a couple of people could go. But I do say that anytime you do that, you're gonna have to be there to police the area, including trash and everything else. It's a major problem, and I don't think that any homeowner should be subject to having open beaches that aren't taken care of and that people come in and trash without a full commitment from the county to take care of all of that, including whether it's additional sheriff patrols or having county staff go through and make sure the trash is dumped, provide the trash cans, dump the trash cans, make sure the place stays clean. And I really think that that's the most important part. As far as acquiring more property, I think we need a boat ramp. I think that we need a boat ramp here in Deltaville. And there's some, you know, conversation, well, there's plenty of conversation and work being done towards that end. So I think that waterfront access is of utmost importance. You have to remember, though, in order to find a piece of property that's suitable for waterfront park development for the county, you have to find somewhere, first, you have to be able to afford it, because any waterfront is gonna be expensive, and second of all, you have to understand what the effect is gonna be on the neighborhood, you know, and what it means for the surrounding homeowners. And so I would always look at that and evaluate from there. But I can tell you that there's probably three pieces of property that are really prime waterfront properties that would be great for waterfront access. Not every access has to be a beach. We could have accesses for kayaking. You know, we've got water trails going in Urbana, there's water trails down here. You know, having kayak access is a great thing, and maybe it's the county just providing parking and then a kayak dock. And so we don't have to look at everything that involves public access as necessarily being beach. So county's got some assets. I think the county could utilize them, and I would be all for utilizing them, but I most, I would really, really emphasize that protecting the surrounding landowners is of utmost importance.
So my campaign has been focused on three main areas: transparency and accountability, budgetary constraint, and lastly, fellowship and unity. And that last point is where we get to this issue. We have a hundred and thirty-five miles of shoreline and precious few areas where a family can come out for a picnic, or a neighborhood can come together, or people can have a public meeting. I've realized that firsthand in this process. I've had several meetings here in Deltaville, and trying to get your constituents from Jamaica to make the thirty-five-minute drive to Deltaville to have a meeting doesn't always work out real well. So I think that, you know, it's way overdue that we evaluate how we can make this area more accessible to families, where we can have places where we can have community picnics or even family picnics. And as far as beach access, you know, yeah, we have some narrow areas where people can get to the water, but that's about it, unless you want to use a sometimes serviced port-a-jog. Not my idea of a good day at the beach. Or hopefully, you don't have to change in it, because there's no changing areas. You know, I just think that we really need to evaluate that. That's a quality-of-life issue to me. That's something that, you know, we talk about your kids moving away, not wanting to stay, you know, going off to other localities. That's part of the equation. We need some places where families can come together, where, you know, church groups can come together, where communities can come together, and people can have a good time and enjoy the area that we have here. You know, there's some beautiful waterfront, but precious little of it that most of the folks that don't live on the waterfront can get to. So I'm a big proponent of looking at opportunities where we can create some public spaces and make them multi-use spaces where we can do different things with them. Maybe one of them could be, you actually have a place where you can throw a hook in the water. We actually have a fishing pier somewhere. Maybe one of them is an area that's strictly beach, where we just, you know, a lot of the problems with the Rappahannock is, it's, you know, shallow for the first mile offshore. Probably an exaggeration, but it's, you know, we need to look at opportunities where we can expand these areas and make something suitable for everybody. On the issue of the adjacent landowners, you absolutely have to be cognizant of adjacent landowners and respectful of the fact that we want to develop something that's gonna be conducive for everybody and not just steamroll over people that have lived there for generations.
Well, that is the biggest issue, you know, surrounding landowners. Just think about it, most of you, if you're having any beachfront property, it's taken care of, and somebody's already there, and if you bring it into a community, they're probably not gonna want that, you know, all that traffic and people partying on the beach. Now, we do have a few small areas in the county by the bridge, and also some areas of here of the land that we probably could have public access, but that's more like canoeing and may put a little picnic table or something like that. But other than that, we've been looking through some things, some things I can't say right now, but we've been very looking, very looking very hard. But you gotta put all the pieces together, and it gotta be a special place, because you gotta respect your neighbors. That's number one.
What they said. Yeah. It's, it, my lovely wife here, that's one of the complaints that she said, she said, "If you don't do anything else, get a beach." We, you know, we live, we're surrounded by water here, and yet the citizens, most of the citizens that live here in the county don't have a beach to go to. They don't have a boat ramp that's really worth anything. I mean, my choice, half the time, if I don't want to pay for a boat ramp, I want to go to a public ramp, it's, the one in Wake, typically, I mean, you know, the one in Wake needs to be dredged half the time, and it's filled up with sand, or else I could go up to Waterview, or I could go down to the end of Stamper's Bay where there's really, there's no pier down there, so if you want to launch your boat, you're gonna have to get out in the water with it. Or I can, what I do is I take mine all the way over to Gloucester County to Deep Point just to get in the water. And that's crazy, when you live in a place that's surrounded by water, and yet we don't have anything, and to me, this is a real function of government. Middlesex County does own quite a few pieces of property. Some of them are small, some of them aren't worth very much. But if it meant selling some of that property and putting all the money together and trying to buy a piece of waterfront so we could do that, now, and I agree with what everybody said, we have to, we can't encroach on the rights of the other people that are the neighbors, and we don't want to have the place be trashed, and, but I think we could, I think we could, we should be able to find a suitable piece of property on this, in this county, this peninsula, and be able to put a beach in, maybe put a net out there to keep the sea nettles from attacking you every time you go out in the water. But that's been done. When I was a kid, we went to the beach down at Stingray Point, and they had a net out there, and that was a great place to swim. It's right at the very end of Thirty-three. And someone now, you know, they own the property now. It's still not used, it's not being developed for anything, but someplace where we could go, I mean, that would be ideal. But anyplace we could do that, and a place where you could put your boat in the water, I think those are some issues, some things we really need to pay attention to.
All right, thank you. Those were challenging questions, but you all did a good job. We asked that you do closing argument. Mr. Evans, you can start first, present a closing position. Each of you will have three minutes to do so, and we'll start with you.
Now we're good. Good deal. All right, so I've talked about transparency and accountability. I'm talking about taking a granular approach to local government, looking at all of our expenses, evaluating how we're spending taxpayer funds. The Board of Supervisors, one very simple issue. The Board of Supervisors currently spends fifty-two thousand dollars a year for health insurance, for a part-time gig. Why? Get rid of it. That would send five dollars back to every taxpayer in the county. Look at how we're spending money, evaluate what we're spending money on, consider how we can reduce the tax for our residents. Budgetary constraint, you know, taking a look at proposals. We need to discontinue the bad habit of voting on proposals the same day they're brought before the board. That should not happen. You haven't had time to evaluate it, you haven't had time to ask probing questions, and the public hasn't had time to consider where they stand on these issues. You elect us to represent you, but at the same time, you can't be in the dark about where your money's being spent. We need to take a hard look at proposals, especially when they involve taxpayer money. And I would ask those tough questions. On fellowship and unity, as I've stated, I think we can do a lot in this county to provide spaces where families can come together, where people can come together as a community. I think the media does a great job at dividing us all up and putting us in different buckets, but I think we're a strong community, and I think it's an opportunity for us to have more fellowship here and to come together as a group. So I would encourage that, and I would work towards that in this role. I'm not a politician. I'm also not someone that believes that a politician should be there for decades. I think there should be term limits on every single government position. If you're good at what you do, another position would be well-suited for you, and you can move on to something else, but you don't stay in the same spot. I think we've got to continue to move and grow and bring in new ideas and bring in new people and evaluate how we move Middlesex County forward in a responsible and fiscally responsible way. If you feel the same way, I'd appreciate your vote. Thank you.
I first would like to thank the DCA building and the citizens for coming out, taking your time to look at all the people that are going to be on the ballot for this in November. And I appreciate, you know, giving you that time. And I just would like to say, you know, I've been on the board a while, but I work good with others, and when the citizens in Jamaica District decide to say, "Hey, Wayne, you doing a business, you don't want you anymore? Get me out," you know, and I'm just gonna let you say that. That's true. That's what they're gonna do. But, you know, I try to do the best job I can. Like I say, you know, my party is Middlesex County and what's best for the taxpayers. I've been good students of taxpayer money, and I can tell you, I've been taught with the best. My father, Frank Jesse, Fred Clinton, Kenneth Wayne Williams, Lee Rova, and Jack Miller. And I'm gonna tell you, they were good students of taxpayers' money, because you think about it, when I came on the board in two thousand and one, I was still taxed with thirty-five cent. Now it's sixty-one cent, and it hadn't doubled in twenty-two years. So, you know, and we still have a good community here. You think about that. Still have a good community. I look around at other counties, but, you know, we maintaining, you know, and I can tell you, you know, we're still paying, because I'll tell you, someone came to me and said, "Hey, look at that landfill in the northern end of the county, because there's a lot of land up there." Okay, we can smell methane gas from Gloucester, we can smell methane gas from King County, and I would not mess my county up here, the county that I love and raised, and lower the tax values for a landfill. So I'm gonna let you know, a lot of that stuff, people don't know that goes on, because, you know, he doesn't get to that step. So I'm just letting you know, I love Middlesex County, I'm gonna do the best I can, and I hope I can get your vote, and the citizens will let you know. Thank you.
Well, first of all, I also want to thank the DCA, not just for holding this forum, but for all you do for my hometown, the ballpark, the community pool, the playground, the tennis courts, of course, now the pickleball courts, the flags and the Christmas decorations and the 5K run and everything that the DCA does. I really appreciate the support that you give to this town and also to the other foundations that are working here. So thanks very much. I have a genuine love for this county, especially the Deltaville area. It's where my family roots, go back more than two hundred years, where the best memories of my childhood were made, and where I plan to live out my life. I know that our local government works and what public safety is all about. Our county's facing challenges that require tough decisions and experienced leadership. My decisions will always be based on my strong Christian values and counsel from our citizens. Campaigning for political office is not easy, but I'll tell you, in the last several months, I've had an opportunity to meet so many great people, to form some bonds with them. I think that the people here, a lot of people in this room possess a wealth of knowledge and wisdom that can really help guide this county where we need to be. From the marina operators to the farmers, from the local businessmen to the public safety officers, it's great to, it's great to be able to work with them, and I look forward to working with them in the future. You may not always agree with my votes if I'm in Saluda, but, you know, particular issues, but you can rest assured that I listen carefully to all sides of the argument. I won't make any snap judgments, and I always do what I believe is right for this county and my hometown, so I ask for your vote.
I'd also like to thank everybody for being here tonight, for the DCA and all the DCA does. I feel very optimistic about this county. I love this county. I love, I love this county. I moved down here specifically to be in this county. Uh, my family history goes back to eighteen seventy when my great-great-grandfather bought two hundred acres, came from Maryland and bought two hundred acres of, of farmland as a timber cruiser. And that land right now is called, is called Chick Cove. Um, so my roots go way back and, uh, my great-grandparents were here, they're buried here at Clarksbury and, um, just proud to be here and always wanted to be here, uh, which is why I moved down. I'm optimistic because I know the good people that are in this county. I've worked on so many different committees and had to ask people for support and help and money and it always comes. Whether it's buying a four hundred thousand dollar piece of property in Urbana for the Urbana Oyster Festival Foundation and the town of Urbana and getting grant money for that. I raised two hundred and eighty thousand dollars before I found out I could get a grant and get it all paid for. But the people stepped forward and I, we didn't take any of the money. Um, we didn't take any of the money, cause once I got the grant, I didn't need the money. But people stepped up and were ready to go and that happened in a very short time. Um, you know, right now we're raising, um, we are raising money for fixing the lights at the sports complex so our kids can play baseball in the summertime. And we have four fields. The cost is gonna be probably over six hundred thousand. We asked the county for seventy-five thousand for the first field. We've generated the other seventy-five thousand. We have a golf tournament on Friday and we expected to raise twenty-five thousand. We've probably had fifteen thousand dollars of contributions in the last three weeks just because we made the ask about what we were trying to do, in addition to what we normally get. So we'll probably be in the thirty-five thousand dollar range for this golf tournament. And some of the people that stepped up are right here in this room and called and said, I saw what you were asking for and I wanna help. That happens time and time and time again, where we get volunteers and we get support and we get financial support. I know many of you, when you see me come and you're like, oh God, what's he want now? Cause he serves on a lot of things and he's gonna be asking for money. And I do, and across the board, people step up. So I feel really good about that. I think that what the county needs and what I can offer, uh, the citizens and the board of supervisors especially is leadership and a vision and really some heavy thing. We're getting ready to start the sheriff's office renovations. It's already been budgeted half a million dollars. They're going around in circles. I talk to Bushy probably every two weeks. He says, what do you think about this? What do you think about that? What do you think about this? I can walk right into that room and sit down with engineers and architects and they speak, I speak their language and I can tell you what works and what doesn't work. So I think there's a lot that I can bring to the table, not just with construction knowledge, but business knowledge, marina knowledge, knowledge of legislature, how the, how the system works. And I really think that I can make a difference from day one and I would like to make a difference and I'd ask for your vote and I thank you again for all being here.
Thank you. On behalf of the DCA, we do wanna thank all of the candidates for coming out. This is a difficult task and, um, we have some challenging questions. And, um, sharing your ideas is very important for the community, for us to understand your platforms and when we go to the, to the polls. So we do wanna thank the candidates for taking, uh, their time out tonight. And thanks to all the public for coming and we'll be here for ten or fifteen minutes more to mill about and ask questions. So, um, please feel free, but thank you all for coming and I hope you enjoyed it.